Good evening.
Yes.
The October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section three-three-one-three. Ma'am.
(inaudible)
I'm sorry ma'am, our meeting has started, thank you. Good evening, the October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section three-three-one-three point one-five of the Ohio Revised Code. Please place your mobile phones on silent mode for the meeting. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Iaplo.
Here.
Ms. Jessling.
Present.
Ms. Marchaza.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. Thank you and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its name.
At this time, at this time, please join me in a moment... Please consider this your first warning. At this time, please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of our student Lucas McGee. Lucas was a son, brother, friend, and Cardinal. His enthusiasm and talents will be greatly missed, and our thoughts are with his family and friends. Mrs. Iaplo, you've now asked for a moment?
Um, yes, I just also wanted to have a moment of silence in honor today has been, a resolution was passed in the, I believe both the House and the US Senate to declare October fourteenth as Charlie Kirk Day, and so in honor of his assassination, I'd like a moment of silence as well.
Madam President, if I may, if I may have the floor. I, I just would like to, you know, I want to start out first by saying that I find political violence abhorrent as somebody who has had jokes told about feeding my body into a wood chipper, about community members...
Mrs. Cook.
Excuse me.
No.
About community member, excuse me.
I had the floor.
Excuse me, I had the floor.
You can speak after.
Madam President, if I may.
Mrs. Cook, are you gonna?
If I may.
Gavel.
You gave me the floor and I'd like to finish what you gave me the floor for, and then she's welcome to have her say.
Could she finish what she wants to say?
As long as I get to before the moment of silence.
And then you will have the floor.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Iaplo, please.
I'm sorry, are we, I said I would like to speak before the moment of silence.
I, I think Mrs. Iaplo was in the middle of...
Speaking?
Were you in the middle of speaking?
I'm in the middle of the moment of silence. Okay, but, yes, the point is, I was, I would like to say something before that.
Can't hold it.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Marchaza has the floor.
Thank you. What I was saying is that, what I, what, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't speak straight with the audience.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you've been asked, you have been asked, this is not, this isn't the way that, that we conduct our meetings, and, no, I'm sorry ma'am, this is, this is a public meeting, this is a business meeting, and you are here to witness the meeting but not to interact with us at this point. We have two public participation moments, this is not one of them. The next time you speak, I will ask you to be escorted out. Please do not speak while we are conducting business, thank you. Mrs. Marchaza.
Thank you, Madam President. As I was saying, I find political violence absolutely abhorrent. As somebody who has been the subject of jokes about myself being murdered, being done violence to, I find it absolutely repulsive. That being said, that while I absolutely reject political violence, I fully support moments of silence when they bring our community together under something unifying, for example, what we've just done for Lucas McGee and his family. That makes sense to me, that is a unifying moment of grief and, and shared reflection. It is something that the community does together and is unified by. Charlie Kirk, on the other hand, we can agree, everyone feels a certain way about him, one way or the other, you love him, you hate him regardless, not a unifying figure. In fact, he's quite divisive. Charlie Kirk, however tragically he may have died, was a divisive political figure, and I don't believe it is our role to bring politics onto the board, as we've so often talked about, but here we are, bringing politics onto our board. So, holding a moment of silence for somebody, and I'm just going to say my piece, doesn't seem right. It doesn't seem the place of a school board, because I believe it sends the message that we are aligned with one political side or another, and again, that is not our role. So, I would encourage us all to move beyond political divides, focus on dialogue, and unity. And that's all I had to say, thank you.
Bill.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you for that interruption, and I'm a little bit embarrassed right now, he was just awarded the, posthumously, the National Medal of Freedom, so, this is something I think our students, this isn't political, this is about our country, so, now that you're done hijacking such, it's very embarrassing, please respectfully, if you so choose, hold a moment of silence.
I would like to welcome everyone to the October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information considering agenda items and to request if needed additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it be an item on the agenda or another topic. To participate in the hearing of the public section, interested speakers must sign up prior to the start of the meeting. Signups are available online through the school district's website or onsite prior to the start of the meeting. You will be called to the microphone when it is your turn to speak, and at that time, we ask that you please state your name and address questions to the board president. Each person may speak only once per segment, and comments are limited to three minutes. The purpose of the hearing of the public is for our community members to address the board. The board continues to welcome feedback from the community as an important component to conducting business. This is an information gathering opportunity for the board and administration so that we can work to best serve our community. If at the end of the public participation, we do not make a statement, please know this does not demonstrate a lack of care for comments shared by the community, rather we want to be thoughtful in our approach and we will provide a response in a timely manner when appropriate. In an effort to maintain an orderly meeting based on Ohio Revised Code two-nine-one-seven-point-one-two and Board Policy zero-one-six-nine-point-one, any person doing any act which obstructs or interferes with the conduct or orderly progress of the board meeting will be warned and/or removed from the meeting. This meeting is being shown live and can be viewed on demand on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Thank you. Now, before we begin, I would like to request that Item C five from the superintendent's report and recommendations be removed from the consent agenda, and then I motion that we add an executive session at the end of our regular agenda to discuss the discipline of a public employee and address the item on the agenda after the completion of the executive session.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I had emailed, actually, quite back and forth about that specific item and doing that as well, so.
All right, Mr. Wade, do we need, so I think the motion is to add an executive session.
We don't need to add a motion, we don't need to motion it, we can just add, so we'll remove the consent agenda and then we'll add executive session to the end.
So, Item C five is removed until after executive session, thank you. Next, we have the district highlights and recognitions, Mr. Heath.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade. At this time, I would like to recognize our PTA and PTSA presidents. We all know the importance of parent involvement in our schools. For many years, the PTA has given endless hours of service to our students, staff, and community. We are very thankful to them for their many projects and their timeless dedication to our students. At this time, we will call their names, if you are present, if you could please come forward and greet our Board of Education members and receive a little token of our appreciation. Jenna Brazdevich, Bellflower Elementary. Kelly Jankowski, Fairfax Elementary. Becky Sacks, Hopkins Elementary. Katie Zeeman, Hopkins Elementary. Amanda Guarnieri from Orchard Hollow Elementary. Linda Gardner from Ridge Elementary. Jessica Bendelay from Sterling Morton Elementary. Christine Henninger from Memorial Middle School. Nicole Pancouch from Shore Middle School. And Amanda Young, Lake County Council. Thank you again to all of our PTA and PTSA presidents.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Next, we have the hearing of the public on agenda items only.
Good evening. Tonight, we're watching another political maneuver from the liberal majority on this board. Cook, Jessling, and Marchaza have pushed politics harder than I've seen in the last four years, and now they want to send someone to the Ohio School Board Association, the OSBA, to vote on our behalf using our tax dollars to fund lobbying efforts that go against what this community actually wants. Let's not forget, Cook and Jessling voted against adding a parental rights platform to OSBA. That means they opposed lobbying for the very rights that parents in this district care about, rights that protect their children, their values, and their voices. And now they want to spend their money to fight common sense, like keeping boys out of girls bathrooms and locker rooms, like ensuring fairness in girls' sports. These are basic protections, not political statements. Meanwhile, Maggie has teamed up with Hague and Hardisy, two far-left liberals who've backed her anti-parental rights votes and anti-taxpayer legislation efforts. Their slogan is "Less Politics, Less Drama, More Professionalism." But what we've seen is more politics, more drama, and less common sense. Here's the reality, over eighty percent, eighty percent of our taxpayers don't have kids in the school system. The last levy failed. Families are leaving the district, and this board keeps doubling down on bad decisions. The OSBA platform now wants local control, but only because the law had to step in and legislate common sense after this board failed to act. You had the chance to lead, you chose politics instead. We cannot afford four more years of Maggie and her allies. Their decisions are driving families away and eroding trust. If you want levies to pass, if you want enrollment to grow, if you want schools that reflect the values of this community, then stop using our money to fight against our will. It's time to vote for common sense, vote for people who respect parents, protect kids, and stop playing politics with our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Sanford.
I'd like to address the first reading of Neola Policy eight-four-six-two. It is my impression from reading it that the key effect of that, the changes is to remove the requirement that suicide and child abuse prevention efforts be, quote, "evidence-based," unquote. I look forward to hearing the reasons for such a move. I had my first experience providing suicide prevention efforts over fifty years ago and was a suicidologist until I retired. I have seen interventions become increasingly refined as scientific evidence informed us of our efforts. I would hope that our schools will continue to rely on scientifically derived interventions and not imagine, cannot imagine a good reason to remove the requirement for evidence-based interventions from Policy eighty-four-sixty-two, which establishes those programs. During the current national administration, we are witnessing too many efforts to move our health care and preventative services away from science and into the realm of fantasy and snake oil. It is my ardent desire that Mentor not follow that trend. I hope the board will continue to use the best approach, the best approach based upon science for the benefit of our students. Simple fact is that moving away from empirically-based practices, best practices in this area will almost certainly result in a dead child. The resulting distress and subsequent lawsuits would truly be overwhelming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, I want to talk about something that should deeply concern every parent in this district. Board President Maggie Cook gave, and two others on the board, gave a letter of recommendation to a school bus driver who had been caught driving drunk. Not only did she fail to hold that person accountable, she actively helped them try to get another job in another district with that letter of recommendation. Instead of protecting...
Mrs. Alad, what is...
This is on the agenda. Stop interrupting me, Maggie.
What is on the agenda?
Stop the clock.
This...
This is, this is a policy that's on your agenda about some second chance program. This is referring to that. Thank you, can you, can you give me my time back?
I don't know what you're talking about.
The second chance, the second chance policy about another bus aide, about your, your employee?
That I gave, I gave this person a recommendation?
The letter of recommendation that you guys gave, that you voted on, you, Lauren and Ginny voted for, and then Annie and Payne...
I haven't given a recommendation to this person, but please proceed.
You can restart my time now that you chewed up a whole minute.
Please proceed.
You have to restart, you just chewed up a whole minute of my speech, I get three minutes.
I, I'm sorry, I thought it was paused, so...
Of course not.
If we could add a, a little time, like forty, forty minutes, forty seconds?
Okay, anyways, instead of protecting students, we chose to protect the driver on that one. That is not leadership, that's reckless and it's dangerous. What's worse is two liberal members voted with you. They had a chance to do the right thing, to take a clear, a clear stand for student safety, and they didn't, they chose to excuse the inexcusable. And now tonight, this board is planning on devoting out a policy to allow second chances for bus drivers or any, anybody in the district who violates safety standards. Let's let that one sink in. Instead of enforcing real accountability, this board is looking for ways to keep people in the system after they put students at risk. This isn't about compassion, this isn't about redemption, this is about rewarding bad behavior and sending a message that student safety is negotiable when it is not. When a bus driver makes the choice to drive drunk or act recklessly on the job, they shouldn't be given a second chance, they should be terminated and never drive in another district. That's not called cruelty, it's called consequences. Parents deserve to know that their children are safe every time they step on a bus, and right now, under this leadership, they can't be sure of that. This board is putting the interests of adults ahead of the student, safety of children, and that's just poor leadership. It's just, it's also a complete betrayal of the public's trust. It's time for a change, we need new leaders who believe in accountability, not cover-ups, who protect students, not bad decisions. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I have no idea what Mrs. Alad is talking about, for the record, I think she's very confused, so I hope that we can clear it up for her, because she clearly is uninformed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex... Our next speaker is Alex Fish.
All right, we are, we are having a public meeting here. We're having a public meeting, and I do need everyone in the audience to please be quiet while we are, while we are speaking, thank you.
Our next speaker is Zoe Behringer, or Branninger, sorry.
Good evening, Mentor families and students. Tonight, I am here to address you about the change in Board Policy eight-four-six-two. As it is right now, teachers and other such staff are required to fulfill an in-service requirement on child sexual abuse from prosecutors and other law enforcement who have dealt with such cases. As the revision stands, this section will be removed. I understand that Aaron's Law has been revised in the Ohio Senate and this provision has been removed. I don't understand why, I do not understand why anyone would remove this provision, it's simply common sense. I, even if it were no longer, if it, even if it was no longer legally required, I still don't understand why you would remove it. I, as I see it, removing this provision would reduce the effectiveness of these in-services and reduce their impact greatly. On the other hand, removing a section of this policy where it states that the programs need to be evidence-based, simply removing the words "evidence-based" takes the program from effective and predictable results to simply guesswork. I am not in favor of guesswork when it comes to student safety, I'm not in favor of guesswork when it comes to preventing child sexual abuse. That is why with the dozen or so peer-reviewed sources I have collected and annotated and shared with you last year, I developed and created a survey for MHS students. I presented the survey to you in the winter last year and saw no real action taken in response. While I was in a bit of a rush this year, I reran the survey, and not to my surprise, the results were worse, most likely because of the lack of action. Of the forty-six respondents polled this year, ninety-five point seven percent of students reported receiving no education about preventing sexual assault in MHS, while in March of two thousand and twenty-four, of the fifty-seven respondents polled, seventy-eight percent of students said they had not received any prevention education. Fifty-six percent of students in two thousand and twenty-five said they did not know how to get help if they were assaulted, while in March of two thousand and twenty-four, it was only forty-nine percent of students said that, that they did not know how to get help. And when prompted with a question from a peer-reviewed paper regarding rape myth acceptance, students showed higher levels of believing that victims were responsible. If sexual assault in our schools is getting worse, why are the policies getting looser? Also, this policy in the state law say that prevention programs are required in K through twelve, but I and others clearly have never received this education, clearly with ninety-five point seven percent of students saying they had never received prevention education. With about one in five students reporting that if they were assaulted, they would tell no one, why would you make this, why would you not make this policy stricter? Why would you not put more effort into caring about these students? This issue is completely preventable, and you are the ones who are supposed to prevent it. I understand it's more convenient the other way, but I don't care about convenience or comfort when it comes to keeping students safe. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Susan Sednick.
I just, I have a couple of things regarding the OSBA training. I just would like to know why Ms. Lauren Marchaza is going to the training and voting conference next month, when she already went last year. I feel like maybe you guys aren't really being, not compromising and working together. I think that Rose is clearly wanting to attend, she's willing to go, but because the three of the liberals on the board, they just, they don't want to give her that chance, and I find that troubling. I don't think it would be very difficult to give Rose a chance to do that. I also would like to have a reminder to everybody that two years ago, when Maggie and Ginny attended the OSBA Capitol Conference, they voted against parental rights. We had to wait until the state passed a law for the parents, and it just proves that we cannot rely on certain women of the board to advocate for parents and families. And I feel like we cannot trust the president of the board to use common sense, as she would rather wait until she's forced into it. This is not leadership. We need folks on the board with common sense and a moral compass, someone who can compromise and lead well. I don't feel that we have that right now, and I'm hopeful for change. On OSBA itself, I, as a taxpayer, I disagree with this platform, because our public tax dollars end up funding lobbyists for this organization, I don't think that's where our hard-earned money should go, so, thank you.
Thank you. I think we should clear up for a moment here, the OSBA vote a couple of years ago, that, that was actually voted on, Tom Tuttle was our legislative liaison at that time, and the vote was discussed by the board, and what it had to deal with was the word "all." "All encompassed" at that time, the discussion was, would teachers have to place their entire curriculum for the entire year on our website? And we did vote at that time that they would not have to put every item on their, on their, on our website on a daily basis a year in advance. So that is what, we voted, that we decided as a team to send Mr. Tuttle to present to OSBA, and he did. That is the vote that they are discussing, thank you.
I would like to just clarify, as somebody who was on the board for that, that vote, that's not a hundred percent accurate, it was voted on by the board, I did not, I, I supported that being added to the legislative platform. We did have discussion on the board about what does the word "all" mean. I had no problem with the word "all," because I do believe that parents should have the right to know all aspects of their child's education. In the OSBA lobbying platform, it did not describe specifically that... In the OSBA lobbying platform, it did not describe specifically that you would have to put your curriculum in there for a year, so. Obviously.
Right, but that was discussed at their forum. And I know that we discussed that at the table and I know you supported having it up there for a year, but that, but ultimately, our board decided not to support that.
I would suggest anybody who has, who is looking into this to go back and watch the board meeting so you can decipher for yourself and see exactly what was talked about. Because I don't believe that that's exactly accurate, but go ahead and watch for yourself, please.
Thank you. Great idea.
Mrs. Cook, having been at that particular meeting and recalling the long session that Mr. Tuttle attended on our behalf, that the long discussion that followed that particular change and the word "all" and what that could potentially require of districts was the reason why OSBA delegates in general voted no.
Did you go to that delegate assembly? Because I did.
You did because you invited yourself. Mr. Tuttle told us what he came away with. And that went on to six thirty, I think it was, that evening.
Yeah, it was like four hours long and there was way more than just the word "all" that was debated, so.
It was closed to everyone, but the delegates was my understanding.
No, actually, they have a section in the back for anybody to attend, to, to witness it. It's, you just, I couldn't vote because Tom was our delegate, but it is open to anybody to sit and listen in on and kind of see how it goes. There were a lot of people that were sitting with me as well, from other districts.
So you do understand that we didn't vote against that?
I'm not, I'm not quite sure what you're saying. I just, I would tell everybody to go and watch that meeting that we had so you can decipher for yourself what was said and what wasn't said. I don't think either of us can reiterate, you know, verbatim what, what was the discussion two years ago, so.
All right, next we have our superintendent's report and recommendations.
Madam President, members of the board and Mr. Wade, I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 6A1 through 6A4.
Second?
Is there any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Ayapo?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board and Mr. Wade, I'm recommending approval of the addendum to the 2526 service agreement with the ESC of the Western Reserve.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Ayapo?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board and Mr. Wade, I'm recommending approval of the contract agreement with Lake Tran.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion?
I just want to say kudos to Mr. Heath to kind of look into that. I know none of us discussed that as being a viable option, so that was truly something you took the initiative on and I do want to recognize that you did that and thank you. Just echoing that, thanks. Good, quick thinking and this is a temporary arrangement, right? This is going till December?
Yeah, and we put it in there kind of vaguely, just with an hourly rate that we will utilize depending on what our needs are over the next couple of months. We have it set up through December, knowing that one of our long-term medical leaves of absence should be done in December. But we've got the ability to add additional hours in there if need be based on the driver shortage that we're continuing to experience.
So, and we'll still be, we're still basically prioritizing like our, our drivers, our full-time drivers, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Mr. Heath, do, do all of the routes that Lake Tran covering for us, excuse me, do they all have mentor educational assistance on board?
Just so everybody's clear on how we kind of structured this, I met with the CEO from, from Lake Tran the day after we had to close and we specifically talked about some of the coverage of our routes with routes that contain less than ten students. What that allowed us to do then is utilize a Lake Tran driver with a Lake Tran bus, but then utilize our mentor bus aids on those buses with a mentor radio and the tablet that goes along with our routing system so that parents can continue to follow those routes in the My, MyRide app. So that's what we've been focusing on right now are just those routes that contain less than ten students. We'll continue to, to look at other options in the future, but that's our short-term solution to this right now.
Thank you. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Ayapo?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board and Mr. Wade, I'm recommending approval of the Renaissance Edge Climber subscription renewal.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Ayapo?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Mr., or Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board and Mr. Wade, I'm recommending approval of the agreement with Sunshine Transportation.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Ayapo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board and Mr. Wade, I'm recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel and C2 through C4 now, all related to human resource matters.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Ayapo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries Pfizer. Yes. And Madam President, members of the board and Mr. Wade, I'm recommending approval of Agenda Item D related to administrative staff recommendations.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Ayapo?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Next we have the Board of Education report and recommendations and our first item under Board Business is the first reading of the Board of Education Neola Policies. And because this is a first reading, no vote is necessary.
Would you like me to maybe run through?
That would be fantastic. I was just, do you want me to read each one?
Uh, so a couple of things, just to clarify, because I know some of this came up in public participation as well. First off, 2431 is on interscholastic athletics. This specifically is related to House Bill 96 that also included an opportunity for students who are enrolled in another district to participate in ice hockey, should the district elect to permit it. The law requires that the district where the student is enrolled be located within twenty miles and not currently offer ice hockey. This would be a superintendent's agreement if we were to enter into this one as well. Again, there's a bunch of criteria that they must meet. We're, we're really looking closely at the impact this policy may have on our ice hockey team here in addition to our athletic department budgets. We will provide some of the cost considerations as we dig into the ice hockey expenditures from the last couple of years here to all of you on the board here, hopefully by the end of the week. Just a couple of things that we were able to identify based on some questions that had come up in regards to this policy. We do not currently provide individual player equipment because the families have purchased that equipment, the equipment for their athletes already. The uniforms are purchased on a five to six-year rotation, similar to all of our other sports, so the costs there are minimal. We do pick up the cost for transportation and ice time at the ice arena, however. Currently, based on initial conversations, there is only one student right now that has requested to play for our team here in Mentor under this law. He attends Riverside and has participated in the Mentor Youth Hockey Program for many years. The impact on the cost for one athlete obviously would be minimal, but again, we want to make sure we provide the board with all of the financial information about this between now and the second reading of this policy in November.
Mr. Heath, can I, can I ask a question about? Are, are you still talking about the same policy?
No.
Okay, so I know I had asked you several questions about this. So in addition to the costs that I know you're going to get to us, are we having trouble filling the team right now?
Uh, no.
And do we have cuts?
Uh, no.
Okay. Is this law, you said it was House Bill 96?
Yeah, it was part of the budget bill.
Part of the budget bill, okay. Does this require us to do this or this is just an agreement we can't enter in?
We can enter into the superintendent agreement for this. It's not a requirement at this point. Think it's something that is kind of being tossed around about the state right now just to try and consolidate some programs because there aren't many ice hockey programs in the state.
So are there, currently do, is it a law that we were required, correct me if I'm wrong, to allow students that go to a private school within the Mentor School District's borders?
Yes, so at this, yes.
They're required if they want to play, but outside, this is the new piece?
Correct.
Is the outside, okay.
And again, we'll get you some additional information on this one as we learn more.
My concern would be if there were enough students who were coming from outside the district that some of our players wouldn't have as much playing time. And that would concern me and if we have this in our policy, I don't know that you could retract that or adjust that. Once that is in policy, you, you wouldn't be able to say, well, now we've got eleven players coming from that twenty-mile radius outside the district and our players are sitting on the bench because others are, are taking those top spots and that would be my concern.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing and I wonder, is there a way we are able to, I don't know, can, can we give Mentor students priority, you know, when it comes to filling spots on the team, playtime or otherwise? Is there anything we can do around that with the policy?
Uh, I don't think we can write that into policy.
Okay.
I think, I think playtime is earned and across the board and if you open up that can of worms saying, oh, you don't go to our school, but you still pay taxes and you can't be, I mean.
I meant in terms of joining the team?
Right, no, right. I mean, there's no guarantee, we don't have playing time guaranteed even within the school, so if students are coming from outside for this policy, why are we giving this, this team, this sport extra, you know, special treatment? It's, that's, I think we're missing the point of a team. Once they're on the team, whether they go here or not, they're part of the team, so.
Right, so I, I hear that. I think you're, I think my point though is, you know, if they're from, say, a different, a different district outside of, outside of Mentor, they're not taxpayers. They don't pay taxes into our district. And to come and take the place of, of students who do play, pay taxes is, is my concern.
I have a question, Mr. Heath. Have you talked to the, like, hockey coach or anything and asked, you know, what their opinion is about this?
Yeah, our athletic director has spoken to him.
And what was their feedback?
Because he's been working with the Mentor Youth Hockey Program for quite some time, there are individual athletes that have been coming through that program that, you know, he'd love to be able to coach again. This is that opportunity to do that. Again, right now, we're only talking about one student. I think there were others that were interested, but they had joined club teams here recently, so they are not interested in playing for Mentor now.
Mr. Heath, when, what is the timeline for that? Are they practicing soon or?
And that's why we put it on for our first reading here in October. That way, if we did put this into policy for our November meeting, we would be right before the start of that season.
Thank you.
Mr. Heath, so it's a student that would be outside of our district, not like a private school student. It's a student that doesn't live in Mentor.
He's from Riverside.
Yeah. I, I share some of the similar concerns up here. Just, I guess I would want some more information.
Yeah, we'll gather more.
One student's nothing to, you know, but my concern would be what if we have, then we open it up for everybody and then, you know, I know how, I went to Mentor Schools, it's very hard to be on a team here and get playing time, so I do, I think that's, I think that is a valid concern.
It's an unfunded cost as well, potentially.
That's why we're, we'll gather more of that information. And again, you know, currently, this is just for ice hockey. The other part of the concern is, does this open it up?
Right, that was my next question.
In the future to other sports then as well that might, for example, I know I'd spoken to some of you here this week on, and late last week on this topic. You know, could boys volleyball be next or girls wrestling? Those up-and-coming sports that are generating a lot of interest out in the state and maybe some of our neighboring districts have one or two kids that are interested. You know, would they then want to send their athletes to us so that they didn't have to start a program? Which again, goes back to Mr. Wade's point of, you know, us incurring the cost of coaching and, and having that athlete play for us as opposed to their homeschool.
Did this come in the form of our choice-of-year updates with Neola?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that was part, it was included in the budget bill.
And the cost of like pay-to-play types of things would be the same? It wouldn't be an additional cost because they're outside of the district?
Yeah, we had asked that question and from a legal standpoint, we wouldn't be able to charge another student a higher rate than what we're currently charging our students.
It seems, because it does delve into my purview a little bit from a financial perspective, it does seem odd that it's like an open enrollment for sports without a funding source. So for districts who can't afford to have sports because of size or because of not having interest or having the resources, if I was in those districts, I would encourage my kids to take advantage of this because then they can have that experience, but it's going to be at the cost of the taxpayers in the Board of Education of Mentor Schools if we, we open this up. So I think that's something that should be considered. There's not, I mean, these are things that when we talk about issues with property tax or other things that are going on, this is a policy change here that directly delves into that issue. So I think it's something that should be considered cautiously.
I also see it as a loss of opportunity for our current students, potentially.
Especially when we have a very winning team as of last year. They did very well, went all the way to the championship. So yeah, I agree. If it was me, it was my child, I'd say, hey, go join Mentor's team.
And when you allow one student, that's the open door. You know, you can't say, oh, girls wrestling, we're going to treat any differently or we don't want five students, we just want one. So if there aren't any limitations, I understand allowing students who live within the district because those families are paying property taxes. Outside of people living within the confines of Mentor Public Schools, that's not true. So I agree with Mr. Wade's point of view that, yeah, it excuses that responsibility to offer a more robust interscholastic school program. So I, I don't think it's a good idea.
And, and just based off the conversation at the table here, I, it, it doesn't seem like we've got a whole lot of support for this and it's very, very easily something we can just pull off the table entirely right now.
Yeah, I don't, I, my, I personally wouldn't, wouldn't write a policy for one student and I think that that, just that, you know, alone is probably not the best practice, so.
But and again, that's kind of a unique thing too. And this, this policy impacts relatively few public school districts in the state and we're the only public district in the county that has an ice hockey team. So that's why it impacted us. But I, I'm perfectly fine pulling that completely off the table right now and having the conversation with that one Riverside family, so. with that one Riverside family, so. Are we good with that?
Yes.
I would agree with that. Is there any disagreement to that? Mrs. Iaplo?
I didn't hear what you, sorry.
I would, I would, I would look, it looks like there's a consensus, but I would be interested in having a little bit more time, maybe seeing if there's language we can put in there because it does seem if it's one student, and it's not like it's very easy to have a hockey team. So it's, that's, you know, this, they're not asking for, you know, one of the typical sports. So, you know, my concern is for, if there's a child that can benefit from this and, and, you know, I don't think one position. But I also understand not writing policy for one, that one student.
Well, it's not limited to one either.
What?
It's not limited to one.
Right, right, right. But I don't think you're going to see...
Right now, it's just one.
Influx, yeah.
Okay. I will pull that one off. Second, 15130, just a, a real quick update. It's just removing the registrar of motor vehicles from the list of individuals that need to be contacted when a student under 18 withdraws. And then it also adds something in there about having a written notification with that as well. So just a couple of things to clean up that policy. 5223 goes back to the release time for religious instruction during the school day. So this policy was updated based on the language coming out that was kind of tweaked from our initial passage of that policy back in the spring. Basically, it just updates the policy to include the updated time parameters that came out of the budget bill. And it also allows students to bring materials back to school from the RTRI location. So those two things that came out of that budget bill and tweaked that language have been included in this updated policy. Everything else remains the same. In regards to 8462, because I know we had a couple people speak on this, and really, this change doesn't impact us significantly right now because we already have a lot of these things currently in play for both our staff and for our students. But just to kind of give a little bit of context to it, so in the budget bill, schools were tasked with providing training in child sex abuse to certain designated staff, including nurses, teachers, administrators, counselors, school psychs, and mental health providers. The law further specified that the training must be provided by either a law enforcement officer or prosecutor who has experience in handling cases involving sex abuse or child sexual violence. House Bill 96 modified the law to strike the requirement that the training be provided by law enforcement or prosecutors. It also modified the requirement that the Department of Education and workforce develop model curriculum for the training. School districts are now tasked with developing their own curriculum for youth suicide prevention and child sexual violence in consultation with public or private agencies or persons involved in these areas. So this policy update incorporates those changes, basically including child sexual abuse prevention in the training and curriculum that are required by the district. Again, we're already currently compliant with that, with that updated policy, and that's being done both through our Public School Works training and also in our health curriculum. I know Zoe spoke a little bit earlier as well, and we've met with her in regards to some of the programs and initiatives that she's brought to the table based off of some of the surveys that she has done as well. And we're going to continue to push forward with some of those things that will also help us meet some of these guidelines as we're moving forward with the new policy. So in reality, it's not going to change our practice much. It's just updating things to give a little bit more flexibility so that this does not have to be done by a law enforcement officer or prosecutor.
Can I ask though, Mr. Heath, we did remove those words, best practices, as one commenter said. What, what was the reason for that?
I didn't write the law, so I don't know.
So by law, we can't include that any longer?
No, we can still use, we can still use all of those. They just removed it to provide more flexibility for districts.
Flexibility, so you're saying in practice, we do still base our training on best practices?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm glad to hear that, but I would also show support to keep that language in, to ensure that we would always be following evidence-based and evidence-based practices. I know that, I'm glad to hear that we do, but I want to make sure that, that we always do.
And then to Zoe's point earlier, if, what I understood was correct, if I heard, if I, somebody chime in if maybe I heard wrong, but what she's saying is her, her survey results showed us, or showed her rather, that students are feeling that they, they don't receive this prevention training. Is there a miss happening? Like what, I mean, if you could speculate, what do you think is going on?
Yeah, and, and we talked quite a bit about that with Zoe. I had our Director of Student Services in there with me as well so that we could kind of tag team a little bit and make sure we got everything written down correctly with what, what was being presented to us. And again, there's kind of a disconnect where that, that training and that curriculum actually lives. We do have things set up in each of our health courses. You know, to, to what level is that being internalized is probably where that, where that speculation rises. So I, I think that's something that we're going to continue to work with our, our health teachers on as well. And again, I, we can always do better. And, and those are some things that, you know, I know when we first met back in, end of last year, beginning of this year too, just kind of going through some things to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row. And we're meeting all of those requirements is an important part to, to what we do on a daily basis here. And I do believe Mrs. Bonis is also looking at health and physical education standards to figure out what our next steps are going to be with those curricula here in the next couple of months. So this will be a good thing to add into those conversations.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you. I, I hope that there's a little emphasis on making sure that that sexual assault piece is strong in that program.
Yes. And then finally, the, the final piece, 8640, transportation for nonroutine trips. This was something we discussed a little bit at our last meeting. But basically, it removes the sentence, no student is allowed to drive on any trip from the policy. This goes back to some of the conversations we had around Top 25 and, you know, for example, our golf team, they, they don't take a bus from the high school to Black Brook. They drive themselves to Black Brook. So this just kind of cleans that up a little bit, gives us a little bit more flexibility as well. What we'll do once that policy does pass is we'll work through some administrative guidelines for students and/or parents driving to nonroutine trips. And then we're also, we've also gotten some language back from legal counsel on maybe some parent release forms that we can implement as well, along with those administrative guidelines here once the policy passes.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Heath. I, I had another question just real quick on that. I know we had talked about it at the last meeting, and I had emailed you about that policy being updated as well. But the radius, is that something like within a certain radius, you know, mileage that they could sign off on? Because I did speak with some Top 25 parents and they were like, yeah, it's great, you know, I'm glad that we're making this change, but they were still concerned that if it's close, not super close, but let's say Twinsburg, they have a big, you know, big show choir there, and, you know, if it's late, they don't necessarily want their kids driving home at 11:00 PM.
And that's why we'll work with all of those events that they listed out so that we can provide transportation when need be to some of those events. But if they're going to, you know, a senior citizen facility here in Menner, they can drive themselves.
Yeah, thank you.
So that, yeah, that, it's good clarification, thank you. So those were all the policies that we had under the first reading here this evening.
The second item under Board Business is the second reading and approval of Board of Education NEOLA policies. Would you like to handle this the same way or?
We had them all on there last time.
Yes, the acceptance of payment by credit. Yeah, is there any discussion? We, we have the acceptance of payment by credit cards, student fees, fines, and charges, the PO 630 audit, and the OSBA. So, I'm sorry, not OSB.
Yeah, that's the platform.
That's the next one. That's our next one. So we have the acceptance of payment by credit card and student fees. Is there any discussion on those?
So moved?
Second.
Sorry, thank you. Any discussion on those? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, yeah. Let's see, next we have the appointment of Greg Markell as our Menner Public Library trustee.
Are we skipping the OSB?
That's actually farther down. I'm sorry, I was looking at my online agenda. We're on number three.
Okay, got it.
Is this a reappointment?
No.
It was a second individual that was...
That you interviewed?
Interviewed. We had a couple of outstanding candidates. And in order to fill that opening smoothly and expeditiously, we thought Mr. Markell might be just the right one, and he accepted, so.
Great.
Very good. So moved? Do I have to?
I have a second on that. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on Mr. Markell? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
I apologize. Who was the motion? Who was the second?
Mrs. Jessling motioned and I seconded.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo?
Abstain.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Motion carries 401.
Okay, and the final item under Board Business is the OSBA Legislative Platform Discussion. So with our legislative platform, we have all received the proposed changes to the legislative platform. Does everyone have this up or how, would you like me to, to read off which changes or do we need to have any discussion on any of them? Just looking for feedback from the board.
I'll just say first that I, I don't have any question. I did ask questions of Mr. Wade previously about the platform, so I got mine answered. What I'll just say is, I haven't gotten the delegate packet yet, which usually has a little bit more information in it. But there is going to be a briefing call on October 30th, so look out for that invitation because I believe any, anyone can log, log on to that, right, Mr. Wade? Yeah, so if you wanted to learn more about the amendments or the platform itself, I believe they'll go into depth about the different amendments on that call.
I would, I'll just add, I'll repeat myself that I, what I've been repeating the last few years. I don't support the OSBA Legislative Platform. We, we do use public tax dollars to pay for their lobbyists. Last I heard, they had three getting paid about $150,000 each. So I just can't support the platform in general. So I don't know how much, you know, I could add to going through every single one of these. So that's, that's just been my stance the last few years, and I, I stand by it, but...
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that. Again, I'm, I'm sure there's going to be a consensus to support it, but I, you know, I look at it as some of these go against what's best for our community and our, and our taxpayers. And so, and, and I think it's just a little bit ironic that we're, one of them is stating that we, we're going to use tax dollars to lobby against returning any funds that we might not deem necessary to our taxpayers. So I just think it's kind of a disservice to our taxpayers. So, you know, again, my last two years voting at the organizational meeting was a no, not because I don't think they do add value in many ways, but because I just, I don't agree with using taxpayer dollars to lobby. And I, and again, I've, I've heard that legislation is in the pipeline to, to prevent that. So for that reason, I won't go back and forth, but that's kind of my stance.
Okay, then we will go through each item, I suppose, and, and vote. So the first item would be on line 370, and it is on local control. So Ms. Marchaza is our legislative liaison, and she will be voting on behalf of our board. Are we in support or opposition to adding this to the platform? So local control is a foundational principle of Ohio's public education system, enshrined in the Ohio Revised Code, which grants locally-elected boards of education the authority to determine policies and procedures for their schools. This principle ensures that educational decisions reflect the unique needs and values of each community. So we are voting, I guess we'll call the roll, and we're voting either yes, we agree with this, or no, we do not.
And to be clear, just because there was confusion earlier, the way the board votes is the way I vote. I can't vote in any other way but the way the board tells me to vote when we, when I get to the delegate assembly.
I don't think there's a lot. I think there's only a few. So, under local control, do you want to just call the same roll each time?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how to best...
I mean, wouldn't, would it not be easier just to state, does anybody have any, you know, issues with any of these proposed changes, rather than going through every single one of them for sake of time? Or maybe like vote on it as a whole?
Does anyone have any concerns with adding the local control piece? No concerns with local control?
Well, I just voiced my concerns with local control. Like, yeah, any of these, these new proposed ones, I, I have an issue with, so I don't know if it's easier to just...
So Mrs. Iaplo is against the local control, and I think everyone else is for adding this?
Yes, I, I am against the legislative platform as a whole. So I would abstain. I think there's, for some of the, I think this is time-consuming and for the purpose of our meeting, and I know we have a lot, you know, folks here that might want to speak at the end, my position is, I don't think there should be a legislative platform. I don't think we should be using public tax dollars to lobby for or against issues that we don't know what those taxpayers would like us to do with their funds. So I would abstain from all of these because I disagree with the entire platform.
I guess what, my concern with that is that we are elected officials, and we are elected to make these decisions, and we are representing the community with our vote right now. So of course, you can choose to abstain, but you're foregoing your own responsibility. You, you had people that elected you to voice your opinion here, so I, I think we need to, we need to go forward.
My, my opinion is that it shouldn't, we should not be using public tax dollars at all to lobby at all.
But we, well, we are.
Madam President.
That's, that's not the system in place.
I think we can respectfully disagree. I don't think that the public needs to hear back and forth about this. I, I stated my opinion, it is my opinion, it's what I believe the people who put me in this position would want me to do.
Okay, so you, you are free to abstain, but we are going to do our due diligence here. Local control, we have two abstentions and...
Yes.
Three in support. So Mrs. Marchaza, you are voting for local control.
I didn't abstain.
Understood.
You did not abstain?
Are we voting? Were you to call a vote? I'm confused of what we're doing.
I thought we were doing the whole thing and then saying who has issues with anything in here so that we can expedite, you know? That's what we did last year.
I was, I was trying to ask if you had issues with local control, and you won't answer. You say you have an issue with the whole platform.
I do, I have an issue with the whole platform.
So you're voting no on everything, or are you voting abstaining on everything?
I voted no on us being members with OSBA specifically because of the legislative platform. So I would say it's up to the folks who voted yes on OSBA membership.
So you're voting no on everything?
I would, I would abstain because I think I'm voting no on the entire legislative platform, everything that has to do with using public tax dollars to lobby.
So you're voting no on the platform. If I could offer a solution, I mean, we can, we can go through the additions and, and I guess we don't necessarily need to take a vote on them, but we could at least go through them so that I know what to do, you know, which piece of paper to hold up when I get to the delegate assembly. Because if we don't go through them, you know, I, I need, I need direction from the board. So I, I can't recall if we vote on each of these, but we do at least need to go through them.
Okay.
Which page are you on to start if we're going through?
We're on line 370.
So from what I understand, I'm going to be voting yes for the addition of local control. Is that correct?
From my vantage point, this is a very important and wonderful addition. It hearkens back to all of the philosophy behind public education in Ohio and the autonomy of each community to govern itself. And I think it's a very good addition to this. That would just be my point of view.
Thank you.
The next section is on line 551. It establishes a process for determining and regularly updating all components and costs of a high-quality public education. So this goes on the base formula amount?
Sorry, which line are you on, Madam President?
551.
Thank you. Page 16. Thank you.
I would be in support of advocating to regularly update all components of high quality, the costs of high-quality public education so that we can have fair school funding.
I am as well.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Iapolo and Mrs. Payne?
No, because of this language, I think that we have to always make room for giving back to our taxpayers when there's waste and we don't need it. So I can't fully support all this language.
Thank you. Mrs. Payne? It's adding and regularly updating the costs.
I'm going to repeat myself again. I disagree with the entire platform and using public tax dollars for lobbying purposes, so.
Thank you. Our next is line 561, the Career Tech Planning Districts supports empowering career technical planning districts to lead planning implementation and monitoring of career technical education programs to ensure alignment with regional workforce needs and student success by centralizing leadership. With Career Tech Planning Districts, Ohio can enhance program accountability, streamline resources, and drive innovation to prepare students for high-demand careers. I'm in support of this addition.
It makes complete sense with the shift to make sure that our students are ready to meet the demands of the future and the workforce that they will face. It certainly seems like a logical outgrowth.
I actually just, a question that I did not ask previously, Mr. Heath, what kind of impact would this kind of support have on our CTE program? Excuse me. I'm on line 561.
Yeah, I haven't looked into exactly how that would impact anything that we're doing. Obviously, with us making the transition to our own comprehensive career technical education program, you know, we're going to have a lot more control here locally over our CTE programs. I'd have to look and see if this is going to impact us one way or the other before I would give an opinion about it.
Okay, fair enough.
I did have one question that you might know, Mr. Heath. So with Ed Choice scholarships and the schools that accept them, do they have any of this guidance relating to career readiness or preparation for student skills, or is that just not in the equation?
Because they don't necessarily belong to a career technical planning district, they would be basically on their own to work with different entities on career tech programming. I'm trying to think of an example right now. Yeah, and I can't come up with one. I know we've been trying to do some additional work with Lake Catholic in regards to some college credit plus programming and some things that maybe we're able to offer here to, you know, if we've got a seat open. Obviously, we're trying to be good neighbors with them as well in that regard. But from a CTE standpoint, I don't believe we've got any connections with community or parochial schools at this point.
And their funding doesn't have any expectation that they would or wouldn't?
No.
That's what I was thinking. Okay, thank you.
The next section is line 578 and we're discussing, this is for students with children with unique educational needs, making sure that they're served appropriately. And OSBA would read, they're supporting legislation to determine that we, again, regularly update the cost of a high-quality public educational program and regularly update the additional costs necessary to provide services to students with unique educational needs, such as students who are economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and English language learners. So the addition of English language learners in there and career technical education, gifted education services. And it provides increased and sustainable funding for special education to ensure districts can fully meet the needs of students with disabilities without diverting funds from general education programs. So we are voting if we feel that this is something that we would like to bring forward for legislators. I would support this.
Same. Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
I'm just going to, exactly what I said for the last few ones, so just repeat myself.
So that's a no?
It is, I don't believe we should be using public tax dollars for lobbying purposes. I do lobbying on my own. I have absolutely submitted public testimony. In fact, for the Fair School Funding Plan was one of them and the cap issues that we were experiencing. So that's an example of me standing up for my constituents and our community and the public schools. However, I don't believe in using their tax dollars to pay for lobbying.
I think we have the majority here, but I'll let Mrs. Iapolo weigh in. Mrs. Iapolo, we are on supporting special education needs, updating, adding English language learners and making sure that special education students are fully funded.
Of course, we have to always make sure we're funding, but I don't think that this is going to make or break if we're funding them, so again...
Well, it would be lobbying for their interest to make sure that their needs are covered. You're for that or against that?
I don't think we, any of our state legislatures representatives would be against funding for special needs, so I don't think it's a... I think that's something everybody can align on.
So you're for that one? You would...
I'm not, I've already given my answer on these, so you guys can get your, that's why I think it's silly we're going through each one.
Okay, we're going to move forward to using a process of flow-through funding for charter community schools.
So this is one that I asked Mr. Wade about. I'm going to not be able to articulate exactly what this means very well because I don't, I still have trouble understanding it. But Mr. Wade, what you explained was they're trying to preserve a way of maintaining the flow-through funding to charter and community schools, correct? That is already in place.
My understanding, in speaking to OSBA on this, is they're advocating for the Fair School Funding Plan to maintain funding students directly based on where they attend.
Okay. So that makes sense to me, yes.
Was this for situations where a district has its own charter school or this is all charter?
No, I think it goes back to prior to the Fair School Funding Plan when the state used to fund students and the, I think the last funding was like 600 or $6,700 or $6,600, I don't remember exactly. And obviously Mentor never got that amount of money, so we would get a fraction of that, let's say 800, $900, whatever the minimum was, 5% at the time. And then anything else would be deducted because you got the full amount, right? So if you were open enrollment place else or you were getting a charter school, community school, the full amount of the $6,600 for the example that I'm using would then be deducted from your state funding. And so your local tax dollars would have to support the difference between what you got from a state funding standpoint of, let's say, 5% versus the difference between what the value was. So what they're saying is they don't want that to occur because it's cost taxpayers additional dollars.
So this is opposing legislation that would do this?
Yes. So they're opposing the process of flow-through. They want it to be a direct funding.
Which benefits the taxpayer, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for explaining that. I was not sure how to advise you on that one because I didn't understand that either, so thank you. I would be in support of that then, with that understanding. Would anyone else like to weigh in on that one? Line 672, reducing or eliminating opposing legislation that would reduce or eliminate tax revenue from voter-approved levies which should be received by locally-elected boards of education, forcing school districts to return any revenue once received, and impeding locally-elected boards of education from directing the proceeds of tax revenues for the purposes of voters approved.
I'm absolutely supportive of this one.
Absolutely, yes.
I would also support this one. Anyone else like to weigh in? See, no more discussion. That might be the last one.
969, school meals.
Thank you. Yes. Line 965, making regular adjustments in school funding based on current operational costs, needs of students and geographical challenges and funding capacity that exist among school districts. And then school meals. School meals being crucial to education in Ohio, this would, supporting legislation that would fund meals for students. I would support that.
Same.
Mrs. Iapolo and Mrs. Payne, would you like to, any comments on that?
Is there been a risk of underfunding school lunches? I mean, I think this, that this is needed. Why was this added? Was there any context?
I don't know. I would assume that because we, you know, are wondering about our title funding for free and reduced lunch at the federal government right now, that perhaps we would need to look for other sources and we would need to advocate for that. I'm not sure, though.
So like when the Biden administration hung this over everyone's head?
So I think what it says is, OSBA supports legislation that establishes a universal school meal program. So what they're saying is, you know, ideally, every child in public school won't have to pay for a lunch. And I know that some districts, including Willoughby, Eastlake, have managed to make this work with some, I can't write, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong. It's Title I credits or something along those lines. They're able to provide free lunches for their entire district. We are not, it doesn't make fiscal sense for us to do that. We can't quite do that, make that work. So for me, I believe in, ideally, yes, every child will have a free lunch. Every child will have a free breakfast. I know that's just out of reach for us fiscally, like I said. So if there's legislation introduced into the State House that could move that forward for us, I'm 100% behind it.
And I would also, I would also just add to make sure that our students that do qualify for free and reduced lunch could continue to receive money for that.
Yes.
I'm not saying that there's any legislation right now that's saying that they don't, but just to continue to advocate for that.
Yes.
I'd like to know how that specifically is affecting, you know, our schools. Because if it is an issue, while I don't agree with the OSBA lobbying platform in general, like I've said, I have submitted much testimony in support or opposition or even contacting our state legislators. And I would have no problem doing that on my own behalf if that's an issue for Manner, absolutely.
I'll keep an eye on legislation. If there's opportunities for that, I'll let you know. That's really good to know. I think this amendment was introduced by, I want to say it was the Cleveland Heights, University Heights District. I'm not sure what their situation is over there, but if there's legislation that crops up and there's opportunity to provide testimony, I'll be sure to let you all know.
Okay. And that brings us to the end. Next, we have the legislative report. Ms. Marchaza?
Oh goodness, all right, I'm up. Okay, I have to confess, I might go over my time limit because there's a lot going on. And please, I'm going to go through first just a quick federal update and then we're going to spend the rest of the time talking about taxes, which I know is a bit of a snooze fest, but it's really important. So first, federal updates. I think a lot of people already heard that the Department of Education eliminated several employees in the Office of the Special Education Programs and Rehabilitative Services Administration. And these are the two divisions that make up the Office of Special Education and Rehabilitative Services. So we did get at least one question. I got additional as well, but questions about the impact of this, these job eliminations on Manner specifically. So to be clear, the impact on Manner financially, there isn't one because we've already, Mr. Wade, received our federal funding. Is that correct? No interruption in funding, federal funding?
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. I was speaking to my neighbor in class.
I'm sorry. I'm just saying, we received our federal funding. There's no interruption in federal funding due to these job layoffs.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we had the delay at the beginning to get it approved, which everybody across the country did. However, our funding has been approved.
Thanks for your honesty about not paying attention, though.
Yeah, I'll always be honest, even through a fall.
All right, I'll give you a break. The, I think the concern, though, and this is what I said to one person who emailed us, was, is really that I think the oversight that is lost, so folks who have kids with disabilities, they might see a lapse in the monitoring that that department does of school districts to ensure that those kids are getting the services they need. Is that right, Mr. Wade? Is there anything you want to add to that?
Because I wasn't paying attention.
Because you were paying attention this time.
I was, I know what the question you were asking me, but I'm not sure which policy we're speaking on.
We're not talking about, just the layoffs. I don't think that there's any other impact on our district, is what I'm saying.
Not that I'm foreshadowing. As I explained to a community member who asked the question earlier, I have no concerns impacting us from a financial perspective. As we know, when we get requests for, we have to make requests for funds received, whether it be from the state or the federal government. We have to submit cash requests and it depends on when we do that, whether we get the funds before the end of the month or not anyways. And ultimately, it ends up being a wash because the funds are guaranteed.
Okay, thank you very much. So as for the State House, the Ohio Legislature returned to committee hearings on September 15th or that week, thereabouts. They've got a lot of committee meetings going on. I think one of the priorities lots talked about anyway is redistricting, which will be one of the biggest and most important topics this fall and will have impacts on the bill negotiations coming up. Some other big news that came out of the State House was the state budget veto override. So a couple of weeks ago, the Ohio Senate Republicans joined the House in overriding one of Governor Mike DeWine's school-related vetoes, which restricts the types of levies that we can put on the ballot. So we are no longer allowed to place replacement property tax levies, fixed some emergency levies, substitute emergency levies, and combined income tax fixed some property tax levies. So that's a lot of tools that are now being taken out of our toolbox that we might use to fund our schools. We did hear too, from both House and Senate leadership, that they do expect more vetoes in the coming month or so. So I'll be keeping an eye on that. All right, so now the big piece of the presentation for today is really about property taxes. We had two really important reports come out. One of them was from Governor DeWine's Property Tax Working Group. They released their report. There were 20 ideas in all that they shared. And they kind of fall into three buckets. One was support for existing legislation, which includes HB 186, which I'll talk about in a minute, HB 156, 154, SB 42, and that's it. They also voiced support for placing restrictions on the growth of levies in various ways. They voiced support for changing the ways current taxes are collected, including giving the County Budget Commission the right to rollback... the county budget commission the right to roll back excess, excessive, or, I'm putting them in quotes because it's whatever they deem to be excessive or unnecessary levies. So they also, oh, there were a couple of other things. They voiced support for an increased homestead exemption or a circuit breaker, which would limit property tax increases based on a homeowner's income, so folks with lower incomes would pay less in property tax. I think that one's pretty popular, but they didn't, and there are a lot of bills that have these components in them, but they didn't really voice support for a specific bill, really just the concept. However, I should say that all of these would require lawmakers to actually partner with them on passing these. So, and again, I mentioned that last month, I, I don't know necessarily what the status of that is, but the other important thing to note is that they, all of these things would require that the legislature not only agree with them, but allocate money to make them happen. And since the state budget is already signed and done, it's unlikely that we'll be able to see any of these move forward, at least this fall. The other really important report that came out is by an organization called the Ohio Education Policy Institute. This is, this is an institute, OSBA actually invited us in conjunction with OASBO and BASA to a webinar. I, I didn't attend it live, I think Mr. Wade did. I did watch the recording, though, and I think it was really helpful, so I would encourage you all to take a look. But they, in that webinar, they had Dr. Howard Fleeter and Dr. Greg Browning, both are experts on Ohio property tax and school funding, and they were the authors of this report. And in their report, they issued eight recommendations. But what I, what I really liked, what I really appreciated was Dr. Flea, Dr. Fleeter's just a brilliant person, anyway, but every time I've heard him speak, he, he shows this graph. And I can, I remember seeing it in, I think it was in May, when he was talking about the state budget, but he kind of sets the stage and tells us about the history and kind of how we got here with property taxes. And he says that over the last several decades, like 30 years or so, what we've seen is a big shift in the way, the way different groups and classes pay property tax. So in 1975, very quickly, residential and agricultural property, properties paid 46.1% of school property taxes, while businesses paid 53.9%. But jump forward 30-some years, the residential and agricultural, cultural share, so homeowners and farmers, that, their share went way up and businesses went way down. The state's share went way down. So what we now see is that homeowners and farmers are footing most of the bill, while the state and businesses pay a lot less than they would, than they should, some would argue. And that's kind of Dr. Fleeter's point. So he said that, you know, in this report, it's sort of, that's why we're seeing these sort of predictable slew of, of bills coming through the State House to kind of chip away at the problem, but not really addressing it in full. Addressing it in full would mean taking a look at what everybody's paying and making sure everybody pays their fair share. So I really appreciated that presentation. Again, I encouraged you all to take a look. They had some big concerns, namely for those districts that are on the 20 mil floor. We are not there, thankfully, but there are districts nearby that are. And for those districts, they're in a lot of trouble with the, the bills that are coming, that are coming our way. There are, like I said, almost 400 districts that are, so there are, what, 600 and some districts total in Ohio. So we are about to see some hard times if these bills come to pass. A lot of the recommendations that came out of this report, very similar, but also different. Circuit breakers were discussed, tax freezes for seniors were discussed, the homestead exemption also discussed, but also local voter-approved homestead exemptions, so making sure that the local voters have a say and that, you know, those clawback provisions are not present, that we're not looking at unconstitutional rollbacks of voted-upon levy funds, limiting residential property tax rates for low-income Ohioans, and, and really taking a closer look at tax abatements and exemptions and enhancing local government productivity. So again, he, they kind of laid this out, but then they said, there, there are four bills essentially that they're very concerned about. They're actually the ones that Mr. Wade included in his report on Friday. So this is where I'll, I'll wrap it up here. House Bill 129, this allows districts to renew emergency or substitute levies as fixed-sum levies, but it will include those levies on the 20 mil floor. Now, Mr. Wade, are you paying attention? Because I'm gonna ask another question.
I am.
Okay. If, if that happened to us, if we were to renew our emergency levy as a fixed-sum levy, would that put us at the 20 mil floor?
Well, we just renewed it, so that would impact us for 10 more years.
Okay.
So, and then the other part of that provision that they're, because the 66 override actually eliminated the ability to renew that, so now House Bill 129 would allow us to renew it.
Right.
And it would allow us to keep the homestead and rollback in that.
Correct.
So that actually saves the taxpayer dollars if this is continued. So this would be to our benefit. Adding it to the floor, we're currently not on the floor, so it just pushes further off the floor. So it, you know, doesn't have a direct impact currently, but it could because we're projecting that we're gonna be close to the floor, if not at the floor, towards the end of the forecast. So.
The five-year forecast?
Well, the new four-year forecast, but yes. But we would be still pretty, this one wouldn't impact us largely.
Great. The other one that was on your report was House Bill 309. This is the one, this is gonna sound very familiar because this is the one that was included in the state budget but eventually fell off. This is the one that would allow county budget commissions to reduce the millage on voter-approved levies if they determine that, again, a district has excessive or unnecessary reserves. So that would essentially mean, you know, Lake County's budget commission could second-guess our levy rates if it deems that the district's balances are too high. It could basically reduce the power of the will of the voters. I mean, this is all pretty concerning stuff. The same things that we were concerned about in the spring are now here in a standalone bill. So that one is definitely worrisome. And then, House Bill 186, this one would cap how much money local schools can collect from property taxes. And this one actually got a substitute bill along with it that makes it retroactive. So again, this is kind of another, you know, if, if the community's tax base grows, the schools wouldn't see most of that benefit. And, and the retroactive nature of this would basically result in what they're calling a refund to taxes, to, excuse me, to taxpayers. But those refunds essentially come out of the schools' pockets, whether it was already paid or whether it was money we were counting on. So it might be a refund, but I think, as somebody said earlier, we'd have to go right back to the taxpayer and ask again. So it sounds like it's helping taxpayers, but it's really about shifting costs. And this was the point that Dr. Fleeter made in the presentation. It would cap or even roll back what voters have already agreed to fund without promising that the state will fill the gap. And what we see, I think, more and more is the state isn't going to be willing to fill that gap. So I'll keep us posted on all of these. I think what's most important to remember is that these bills, and many of them, tighten state control over local property tax capacity and growth. And for a district like us that depends on, heavily on stable local funding, the combined effect could be slower revenue growth, more levy pressure, and potentially cuts to our budget. So I, I just want to kind of provide that context for us. Property taxes are absolutely at the top of the priority list for our lawmakers right now. I want to just reiterate that, like, local school boards did not create this situation. We are simply trying to navigate through it responsibly and conservatively on behalf of the people we serve. And I think that, again, if the state truly wants to deliver fair tax relief as they should, then they should really consider that everyone must pay their fair share. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Next, we have the student achievement report. Ms. Jesslyn.
Welcome to Fall at Mentor Schools. I think that's my last slide. Sneak preview. The first one. So welcome, everyone. We are proud to share that Mentor Public Schools has once again earned a 4.5 out of 5 stars rating from the Ohio Department of Education workforce on our latest district report card. So we're very proud and we're grateful to all the folks who have a hand in that. Literacy is a conduit to success. Congratulations to our Orchard Hollow students who completed the Eye Ready Reading Challenge and celebrated by sharing popsicles with the principal. Small groups can be the key to learning achievement. Our adjustable furniture and flexible spaces offer customized teaching options. The 6th grade Camp Fitch Experience offers our 12-year-olds the opportunity to learn outdoors and to gain skills in teamwork, self-reliance, and personal responsibility that give lasting benefits. Our middle school students explored career pathways at the annual Think Manufacturing Expo. Students connected with area manufacturers, giving them a hands-on look at the many career opportunities right here in northeast Ohio. The Life Reverse Career Fair premiered at Memorial Middle School last week. Students created and presented displays for peers and visitors featuring opportunities that are offered through Mennar High, Auburn Career Center, and the College Credit Plus Program that can help them kickstart their dream careers. The Ohio Department of Education and Workforce CTE Equipment Grant Program awarded Mentor $2.2 million to remodel multiple career tech learning spaces at Mennar High. This is the new learning lab for our Culinary Academy. Here, the gourmet food students have a delicious bird's-eye view thanks to that new overhead camera system. Our Cardinal Work students harvested their first crop of hydroponic lettuce, and it already made the Cardinal Cafe menu at Mennar High. This project is more than just fresh salad for lunch, it's hands-on learning of real-life skills. Our Cardinal Autism Resource and Education School, also called CARES, serves students ages 5 to 22. Our goal is to help each one become as independent as possible when they complete school-age services. One, providing real work experiences that help students discover their strengths, preferences, and interests. On September 23rd, students from across Lake County came together here at Paradigm, well, we would be at Paradigm, for the first-ever Student Leadership Summit sponsored by the ESC of the Western Reserve. Confidence building, practicing leadership skills, and good decision-making were key outcomes. Climate creating has been a feature of the first quarter. Hopkins Elementary kicked things off with their Start With Hello program. Flight School at Ridge Elementary inspires students to build a safe, respectful, and positive school community. Fairfax students have been working to exemplify the cards way, while the Morton kids learned about the importance of fairness on the path to friendship. Our We Care students have been caught being kind. Shore kids gathered for an all-school PBIS assembly promoting kindness and positive school culture. Watching their teachers compete in a fun double dare match was a big hit. And last month, WKYC Channel 3 celebrated Mennar High's homecoming football fever with an amazing predawn turnout from the cheerleaders, band, football team, and our Cardinal community. School spirit is a source of pride and engagement for all of us, and Fall is filled with learning and growth. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have the Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Heath. We have, because of House Bill 96, they have changed the timeline for reporting with regards to the forecast. I did mention that it is no longer a five-year forecast, it's now a four-year forecast. It's the current year plus three more, so, however, based on what is believed to be best practice, I will still report to the board the fifth year. However, we will only report to the state the four years as required by that change in law. Next year, this will have to be done by the end of August. So we'll continue to do that moving forward. So that being said, when we look at our simplified financial statement, the key is that this year, we're looking to deficit spend. We've reduced that deficit spend to about minus $322,000 is what we're projecting, so that, you know, we're heading in the right direction based on some of the things that we've talked about, as we've talked about revenue planning as recent as last January, moving forward to make those reductions. So you see that kind of showing up here. And one of the things that I think is important to point out is based on the assumptions that we're making, which we'll go into more detail here, we do have a positive cash balance at the end of the five-year forecast, which in October slash November is the first time, I believe, since I've been CFO, that we've started the current year with a positive cash balance when we've subsided in a five-year forecast. So that's a credit to Mr. Heath and his team. So when we look at where we're at, as a result, our cash balance, if we're projected a deficit spend by $322,000, will drop from $47,581 to 47, or not $47,000, excuse me, $47,259,000. Obviously, with a forecast, it is based on a number of assumptions, and it's only as good as those assumptions, and as soon as things change, those assumptions become as good as they were yesterday, right? So when you report out your forecast, you share the assumptions that you're making. The key one here, and Ms. Marchaza touched on this, is I assume that the current state law applies, and it applies into the out-years. There are a number of property tax bills and potential overrides that currently exist in the House and Senate that it could impact our property tax revenue. If this was to occur, the district's revenue forecast could need revision and resubmission. So we would have to adjust those based on the turbulent times that we live in currently with regards to what's happening and what resolutions may come from property tax reform that could exist. It also assumes that we will have a triennial update in 2027 of 15.68%, which is up from my May forecast, which I was assuming about 10.38%. And it assumes that will happen in our Class 1. It assumes our Class 2 will drop by 0.33%. That is actually down from the assumption of it increasing in May. And both of these assumptions are a result of a direct conversation that I had with our Lake County Auditor and trends that they're seeing right now in the county audit office, and closely mirroring what happened in 2021 with that triennial update as well. It assumes our historical increase in Class 1 new construction will be a little bit higher based on what we've seen as of late. We'll see, I think, a result of construction costs and property values going up. We're gonna assume that's going to be $10.5 million annually, where it has historically been 8.5. And we will still concede a negative decrease of 1.5 million in our Class 2 construction based on various forms of tax credits that may be given with some of those Class 2 properties that exist. We will assume historical increases in our PUP, which is our Public Utility Property Tax. $2 million annually is going to be reduced drastically to about 25%. We're gonna see that reducing to about $500,000 a year annually, and this is a result of some changes that occurred out of Ohio House Bill 15, which made significant change to how PUP values will be calculated moving forward after 2027. We'll assume our historical collection rate of 99.33%, and it'll assume a continued implementation of all the out-years. So after the biennial budget would occur, we're assuming that what is in the biennial budget for state funding for schools would continue to occur. I didn't, again, I'm not deviating from anything other than what we currently know. Because we all know what happens when you assume. So that being said, and we look at our projected revenue, I changed it on my screen, but not in my hand with the clicker, so I'll do that now for everybody else. We see that the majority of our revenue comes from the local property tax base. 68% of our local, our revenue comes from our local taxpayers. That equates to just over, almost $78 million. We receive 22% in state funding, which is made up of the Fair School Funding Plan, about $16.7 million, an additional 1.3. So we receive about $18 million in state funding based on the Fair School Funding Plan, and we receive another $7.6 million in reimbursements in the form of homestead and rollback credits that we receive from the state. Our other revenue comes out to be about 10% and equates for about $11 million. So when we look at this graphically, kind of going out, I think this kind of resonates with most people. You can kind of see how the assumptions are being placed to get to the values that we're assuming. And I, I think this is a good visual key I always share with the board and the community. This is where you should be looking, is there any abnormalities or anything that looks drastically different from our historic view, which is the first couple of years. You see '23, '24, and '25, which have concluded, are on there, and you can see the assumptions being played out in '26 through 2030. Again, there's nothing that is of drastic Again, there's nothing that is of drastic difference that would warrant a true explanation beyond the assumptions that I've already made, and again, you can see that revenue in the state of Ohio, based on the way that we fund schools between state funding and property tax and House Bill 920, and limiting that growth, our revenue will remain relatively consistent and flat over the course of the forecast. So, what we see is that our revenue is forecasted to be just under $114 million, or just under $115 million, excuse me, and in FY '30, it's expected to be about $117.7 million, which over the life of that equates to about a 2.5% increase over the next five years, and inflation is expected to increase at 2.25% over that same time period. So, we're not keeping up with inflation, basically, from a revenue standpoint. So, our revenue continues to remain relatively flat in all the out-years, and at some point, the district is going to need to have additional revenue. So, we remain consistent with that assumption moving forward. How does our revenue, on the flip side, relate to our expenses? We have a graphic up there which basically shows that 84% of our expenses relate to salaries and benefits, who personnel costs, and we, our next biggest area is purchased services, so those are things that we use to support the running of the schools and meeting the needs of our students. All of our other expenditures equate to about 5%. So, we're just about $97 million in projected personnel costs for salaries and benefits. Our purchased services are just over $12 million, with about $6 million projected in all of our other areas for supplies, capital, and other operating expenses. We do not have any debt in our district, so that is not relevant for us. So, when we look at expenses, because we are a service-oriented business, obviously, student enrollment plays a key piece of where we are projecting and where we project these expenses. So, with our software that we use, our analytics software we use, we have the ability to get the live birth data from the state of Ohio, and that has been updated and corrected, so it is tied back to the ZIP code as of recent as about a month ago, because about two months ago, for the prior two years, it wasn't as accurate to that. They had kind of switched it up because a person retired, and they got a lot of feedback from people across the state that that data should be tied to, because we use it to make projected growth, particularly for schools and other entities. So, with that, we can look at what our live birth data is, what it has been historically with regards to when they show up to kindergarten, and what the percentage is of, okay, here's how many kids were born in 2021, and this is how many kids showed up in 2026. What's the percentage of kids? And you can look at that and kind of see trends, and then use those trends to make assumptions. And the other thing that we look at is, okay, over a five-year period, what is the cohort survival rate? So, what happens as kids move through the grades? What are we seeing? And you can then manipulate that data to do an analysis, which would allow you to then make projections into the future based on things that you've seen in the past and assumptions that you're making, right? So, what we have here on the screen is three versions of those assumptions. You see, the blue line represents a high assumption rate. You have our orange line, which is the lowest assumption rate, and then you have kind of the in-between middle rate, which would be the gray line. So, you can look at Scenario 1, 2, and 3, and Scenario 3 is the, probably the most moderate of the two. It's not an extreme, it's not a high or a low, it kind of looks at everything as that totality, so I would argue that our most likely projection of enrollment is based on Scenario 3, which is the gray line. So, we're going to see a continued decline in our enrollment based on the factors that I've explained, and we use that to make our assumptions moving forward with staffing, because obviously, we want to make sure our staffing is correlated to the student enrollment. So, just like we have to make assumptions with revenue, we have to make assumptions with expenses. So, what are those assumptions? They assume that for our teachers and our classified staff, which is our support staff, which includes bus drivers, custodians, and secretaries and the like, that for fiscal years '26 through '28, that they'll have a 3% increase in wages as those contracts were just approved. I assumed a 1.5% in fiscal years '29 through '30 as a placeholder. It includes our recent changes to spousal coordinations and benefits for healthcare. It includes our exchanges that we've made through the contracted, recent, most recent contract negotiations, includes our adjusted severance and our supplemental changes that were made, again, through the collective bargaining agreement. It assumes that in fiscal year '27, we'll see a reduction of eight certified staff, three in '28, two in '29, and two in '30, based on enrollment trends and kind of our projections that we have moving forward. It includes the addition of the two additional school safety officers in the pre, the next two fiscal years. It accounts for our district's five-year capital plan, which we report out in June or July, which includes our five-year vehicle replacement plan, as well as our five-year technology plan, which we did fund, if everyone recalls, at the end of the fiscal year by moving those monies to the 070 account. So, those monies have already been accounted for and put into a capital improvement fund. It assumes, in most areas, that we're going to see a 2.25% inflationary increase. In our two more larger, two-digit object codes, which is our 410s and our 450s, we assume a two and a half and a 3% increase respectively. The 450s is our utilities, and the utility market right now is a little crazy, if you've been paying close attention to that, so I think that that's a pretty conservative assessment that we would see those kind of increases. We are locked in for our gas and electric for another year and another year and a half, so we won't necessarily see that all at once, it kind of just transpires over time. And then, it does assume a 1.5% increase for all years for administrative contracts.
I'm sorry, did you say we're locked in for gas and?
Electric, yes. So, again, that visual that we showed for revenue will show for expenses, so you can kind of see where we've been historically. Again, the first three bars of our stack chart here, and then kind of going out, and you will notice that there's really no abnormalities there as well, and the increases that you're seeing are based on the assumptions that I have made on the previous page. What I think is key to point out, and this is something, again, that the Citizens Financial Committee is always challenging my predecessor, myself, to do as well, is to make sure that we are being consistent and not being overly undershorting revenue projections and overstating projections on expenses, so that we kind of, when everything's done, we have precision along with accuracy, right? I think it's, you know, I guess that's the chemist in me, wanting to make sure we have both. It's not good just to be accurate and then imprecise, but you've got to kind of be both. So, I think it's important to the board and the community to see that we are actually projecting a annual expenditure change that is less than it has been historically. So, when you talk about tightening your belt, we're not just saying it as a talking point, we're actually demonstrating it in the decisions that we're making, in the projections that we're making in our fiscal forecasting, so not only short-term, but in a long-term piece. You know, so it's about 0.3% less going out, and I think that's important to recognize. I think it's also important, this used to be, I think, one of Mr. Wilson's favorite slides that he always had in his projections, so I do it as an homage to him, but also to share with our community that it costs us $90, $99, excuse me, per day, per pupil to educate a student in menor schools. So, if you kind of take that out to seven and a half hours, I mean, that's a pretty good return on investment with transportation being provided. I'll bet sometimes it might be a little bit earlier, it might be a little bit late. It does get done.
Brings it up.
And we're doing it for $99. You can't pay a sitter to educate a kid and drive them for $99 a day. So, I think that's, that's important to point out as well. What does this all mean? It means if we kind of continue that way moving forward, obviously, we're deficit spending, our cash reserves are going to decrease, so this is the visual representation of that very first slide that I showed that had all the numbers, and we'll see that our cash balance by 2030 would actually be down to $3.1 million. What does that mean from a day's cash standpoint? We talk about this quite a bit, because there's the standard that best practice is, is your cash should never fall below 90 days, or particularly 60 days. So, you can kind of see, in the last year of the state-reported forecast, which is 2029, we're at that 60-day mark, and we would be low that at eight days at the end of fiscal year 2030. We also have policy that dictates that the board should not see a cash balance that falls below 15% of our annual total general fund expenses, which for last year would equate to $17.2 million, which we fall below at the end of 2030, and we can't, and we have, must also include our 5% budget reserve set aside that we have, which for this year cannot exceed $5.6 million. So, that is our district rainy day fund, so to speak, that $5.6 million set aside that we have for unexpected costs, and that money cannot be spent unless it has board approval. So, between those two, that kind of basically states as a board that we can't have a cash balance that really falls below $22.8 million without having a plan to address further reductions or additional revenue. So, this is kind of where we're at with regards to a projection of where we were in May, and you can see in May, we were looking at, you know, kind of that red line, it's kind of the preface of the fact that we don't want to fall below that, and we're getting into that yellow and pink lines back in May. Happy to report that in October 2029 is in a better position, obviously, for the decisions that have been made from the administrative team for adjustments to our projections and our staffing, and the cuts that we've made to reduce our expenses, and some additional revenue that we've been stealing from investments, as well as some slight uptick in state funding puts us in a better financial position. So, when we look at kind of out beyond even forecasting based on trends, you can kind of see that in 2031, we'd have a negative cash balance of $19.3 million, and it could rise as high as 46. Obviously, those out-years, let's be honest, are very obscure in their, you know, what the impact was going to be, because it's based on trends. But obviously, we know we cannot be in a negative cash balance that would result in a state takeover as we experienced in the early 2000s. So, this, trying to normalize this chart, continue, because this is the one that I said we'd always grade ourselves against, if you remember from our discussions in January of last year, because we said it can't be done by just increasing revenue continuously, that we need to continue to make sure that we're being physically responsible, excuse me, in making reductions. We have met our reduction marks right now in '26 and '27. We still have some work to do in '28, '29, and '30 to hit our mark of reducing it by $2 million that we discussed back in January of last year. So, where does this put us? It puts us in a situation where we still are looking at a 5.9 mil levy in calendar year '26. That would get us through 2031, again, where we'd probably be then seeking additional revenue if everything played out as projected. Excuse me, that would take us to 2033, excuse me. It would be earlier if we only did the $1 million reduction, which is the light blue, not the aqua blue. We'd probably be looking at 2031, 2032. If we don't do anything, and we just, by anything, I mean, making reductions, and we seek that revenue and it's passed, additional revenue dollars, you would be on, looking at projected levy again in 2031. So, you're getting about five to seven, maybe eight years, depending upon the reductions that we make in the amount of the levy that we would seek. So, again, we continue to do the work that we are needing to reduce those expenses. The board that will be in place in January will have to make quick decisions with regards to the district finances and the direction that they want to take, if we would like to put a levy on at the May ballot, and then we have to look at that as well, as if it doesn't pass in May or doesn't go on in May, what we do in November and see the consequences or repercussions, I guess, of those decisions as well. We did present this to the Citizens Financial Advisory on Thursday, October 9th, 2025. They were in agreement with my recommendations and my evaluation of the district's finances and did recommend it to the board for consideration and approval tonight. I would just let the board know, for some reason, if you chose not to approve it tonight, we would not be in compliance, because I have to file it by tomorrow, by law, unless you want me to be in jail. I don't think that's really how that works, but maybe. So, we need to continue to find ways to control our costs. That's always my first paramount recommendation, is that we can't continue, you know, you don't continue to spend money when you're losing money, right? It's not a good business model, so we've got to continue to find ways to cut costs. We need to make sure that our staffing is aligned with our enrollment trends, since it counts for 84% of our budget. We need to continue to find ways to control those costs, and we have to be cognizant that by 2028, fiscal year '28, we're at a minimum standard of the 90-day cash balance, and you'll be below the general fund operating reserve policy by the end of 2030, kind of as we get into 2030, right? Because it happens as we transition from '29 to '30. So, we need to make sure that we're considering operating dollars by the end of '26. Not doing so would have to be, lead to other assumptions that we'd have to look at if the board so chooses. Happy to answer any questions on the forecast or assumptions that were made.
I have a, just a quick question. I know you said our personnel costs are about 84%. Do we know what the average is, or what similar, I should say, similar districts? I know the Cup Report has it for like, average salary, but not the total amount percentage-wise. Do you know, are we within benchmarking what it looks like for other folks?
So, we, this is a question I've asked for years, even when I was back as superintendent. There's no data that really says that. I know Mr. Wilson used to always say you want to be between 75 to 85%. I would say also, as a math person, though, as you cut in areas and you reduce your spending and kind of tighten your budgets and things like that, and what we see is that, kind of, if you think about the pie, if you shorten up the other areas of the pie, the one area that you're maybe not decreasing at the same rate is going to get larger. So, it's a proportionality issue as well, because if you remember, when we had larger transfers too, we saw the transfer piece take up more section of the pie and kind of squeeze things. So, I think what we try to do is to make sure, from our standpoint, is that we're having salaries that are in alignment with the market, but also, as well as retaining and attracting staff, so that we have the best people to do all the jobs in the district, as well as making sure that our staffing is in line with our enrollment. I think one of the things that they saw in 2024, when hindsight's always 2020, is that they had increases in wages that were maybe a little bit higher than the market, but they also were adding staff when student enrollment was still declining, starting, and that's when the whole decline started, was back then, as we've seen when we looked at enrollment trends. So, I think one of the things that we've learned from that, and I think of my meetings with Dr. Hoynes back when I was principal in 2011, is, okay, enrollment's going to be this, you need to reduce this, and we were having those discussions, and we've continued that work under Mr. Miller, Mr. Porter, and Mr. Heath as well. So, you know, we definitely are cognizant of that and trying to avoid those things, because it is such a large portion of our budget.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there any more discussion? All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion for items B through H, please.
So, moved?
Second.
Final discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion's carry 5-0.
We do not have any items under unfinished or new business this evening, so we can move on to hearing of the public on any topic, and we did have one speaker that I know maybe didn't get the paper in right away, Mrs. Parry, but I know she was looking for where to turn it in, so we're going to include that tonight, so.
So, our first speaker is, let me just randomize my list now that we have additional speakers, just to be fair. Our first speaker is Jen Halad.
Good evening. I'm here tonight because what happened at a recent board meeting was wrong. I was censored, not for breaking a rule, but because my message didn't align with Board President Maggie Cook's politics, she cut my microphone and silenced my voice. Yet, just weeks later, the same board president allowed a teenager to verbally attack Annie Payne for three full minutes without interruption. Payne for three full minutes without interruption. It isn't about rules, it's about control, it's about who's allowed to speak and who's shut down. Let's talk about the campaign mailer that just arrived today from Maggie Cook, Robert Hag, and Dan Hardesty. It was misleading, divisive, and falsely claimed their opponents want to ban books. That's not only dishonest, it's dangerous. Labeling political opponents as book banners simply for wanting to keep graphic content away from minors is reckless. And we've already seen where this kind of rhetoric can lead. Just this Path Month, Charlie Kirk, a conservative commentator, not a politician, was assassinated by someone radicalized by political hate. When we dehumanize people for their beliefs, we invite violence, and it has to stop. Two board members voted to support parental rights and set age-appropriate boundaries. Others voted to keep books like The Bluest Eye, which graphically describes a father raping his daughter, available to fourteen-year-olds in our high school. That's not education, it's exploitation. This mailer also used fear tactics, tying opponents to GOP Project 2025, trying to smear concerned parents for their values. That's hypocrisy. And by the way, the mailer also violated campaign disclaimer laws, and I have filed a complaint with the Elections Commission. Because if these candidates can't follow basic rules, they shouldn't be trusted with leading our schools. Once again, mentor-made libs of TikTok, this time because our board president couldn't answer whether a male could get pregnant or have an abortion. Well, it looks like I'm not the only one who suffers from some confusion, Maggie. This election matters. Our students deserve safety, not politics. Parents deserve transparency, not censorship. And our community deserves leaders who put education before their ideology. I want to urge voters to vote for Robert Izzo, Don Schutz, and Linda O'Brien, Team ISO for Mentor Schools, because better leaders mean better schools. And also vote for Annie Payne for City Council. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lynn Mazika. Thank you, Ms. Mazika. Our next speaker is John Sanford.
I feel a certain amount of irony saying what I wanted to say today in face of some of the other stuff that's been said this evening, but I'm going to say it anyway. I recall the first time I addressed this board over a year or so ago. At that time--
Mr. Sanford, could you speak into the microphone?
I can try.
Thank you. It's short.
Very better. It's just not made for tall people. I'm sorry. I recall that at that time, the animosity and personal attacks that was being directed towards various board members was appalling and palpable. And I remember just saying, forgetting what I was going to say, and just lamenting what, how the board members are being treated. The focus at that time was on books, about whether certain books should be available for student access. Sadly, even after that was resolved by Madam President's compromises, as suggested, it continues, as you've just heard, to be an issue that is consuming board time. Likewise, the issue of bathrooms and transgender students continues to be an issue, even though it's been resolved. We just heard that again today with Mrs. Iapolo saying, having the piece about Charlie Kirk and how that has politicized a solemn moment. I have contributed to that level of friction around these issues myself, and for that I regret. I apologize. We don't need that kind of stuff here. We need to have civil discourse. Everything that has been said tonight could be said civilly, hasn't been always, but it could be if we had adults in the room. Such conflict is counterproductive, and in retrospect, I feel remorse for allowing myself to be pulled into it, and I apologize again. So, turn the page. You know, we're always going to have disagreements. That's a fact. I can't imagine a universe in which Mrs. Payne and Mrs. Iapolo and I would agree on everything. It's not going to happen. But we can still be civil in the way we do things, and I invite the board, I invite the participants, to start doing so. Because it is time for us to start being and acting like a group of children and start acting like the adults in the room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jaclyn McCormick.
Let's review the inappropriate books available in our schools for our children since Maggie Cook, Virginia Jessling, Lauren Marchaza, and their two liberal candidates, Hag and Hardesty, lie by calling it book banning instead of what it actually is, which is age-inappropriate materials. This is from the book The Bluest Eye that these liberal members voted to keep in your school library. This describes a father raping his daughter. The confused mixture of his memories of Pauline and the doing of a wild and forbidden thing excited him, and a bolt of desire ran down his genitals, giving it length and softening the lips of his anus. Surrounding all of this lust was a border of politeness. He wanted to fuck her tenderly, but the tenderness was not hold. The tightness of her vagina was more than he could bear. His soul seemed to slip down in his guts and fly out into her, and the gigantic thrust he made into her then provoked the only sound she made, a hollow suck of air in the back of her throat. Is this really appropriate for fourteen-year-olds? We have a book called Right Now: Real Kids Speaking Out for Change being handed to elementary school students. It features Jas Jennings, a transgender child activist, and presents the idea that children can change their gender and should advocate for the LGBTQ community. This is being introduced to kindergartners. Children who are just learning to read are being taught complex and controversial ideas about identity before they've even learned how to tie their shoes. Then there's transphobic, deal with it and become a gender transcender. This one's in our middle schools. It tells students there are more than two genders and that they need to deal with it. It promotes the idea that boys should be allowed in girls' bathrooms and locker rooms. This isn't education, it's indoctrination. And it's happening in the very places we trust to protect and nurture our children. All of these books were challenged by concerned parents, and every single one was retained by our liberal board majority, Cook, Jessling, and Marchaza. These are the same people who claim that they don't want politics or drama in schools, but their decisions have created exactly that. They allow policies that put boys in girls' sports and locker rooms until the law had to intervene. Their actions have consequences. Families are pulling their children out of public school, they've pushed families away with their reckless decisions, and our last levy failed likely because of it. Now Maggie Cook wants your vote, but let's not forget Maggie's record. She's censored speech on board meetings, shutting off microphones when speakers criticize her while allowing others to attack fellow board members for the same agenda items. That's not leadership, that's control. And now there's likely going to be a lawsuit over that censorship. It got so bad Maggie had to issue a public apology last month, and that wasn't the only one she's ever done. Enough is enough. The three gave our superintendent a massive raise without even having a contract in the system. They continue to spend your tax dollars on materials and organizations that push a one-sided, left-leaning agenda. And while they may hold the majority on the board, they do not represent the majority of our community. It's time to stand up, it's time to speak out, and it's time to vote for leaders who will bring back common sense, protect our children--
Thank you.
--and put education, not ideology, first. Vote ISO Team.
Our next speaker is Gil Martello.
Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, and members of the board. I have said this many times, our public school system is one of the most vital institutions in Mentor. It shapes our future, our values, and the strength of our community. To understand its true importance, it helps to look at history. Public education in Ohio was established for several important reasons. Number one, to create an educated citizenry. Our founders understood that democracy can only survive if the citizens are literate, informed, and capable of critical thought. Education was the safeguard of freedom and civic responsibility. Number two, to promote equal opportunity. Reformers wanted every child, rich or poor, to have access to basic education, ensuring a fair start in life and help bridge class divides. Number three, to support economic growth. Employers needed skilled, educated workers. Public schools were viewed as an investment in productivity, progress, and innovation. Number four, to instill moral and civic values. Nineteenth-century Ohioans believed schools should teach discipline, morality, and civic duty, the character traits that bind communities together. Number five, to build local unity. Ohio settlers came from diverse regions and backgrounds. Public schools created a shared value, a sense of belonging, and a unified community identity. In short, Ohio public education system was built to strengthen democracy, expand opportunity, fuel economic process, and raise civic-minded, responsible citizens. Recently, I shared an article with all of you by David Brooks of the New York Times, who pointed out that blue-state educational ideology has overtaken the hard science of education. Sadly, we're seeing the same pattern right here in Mentor. Tonight's meeting is another example of what I just stated. For the past several years, this liberal school board majority has ignored educational science, choosing instead to push their ideological agenda. The results are predictable: declining performance, lowered expectations, and growing division. That's why I believe it's critical we elect Linda O'Brien, Don Schutz, and Bob Izzo to the Mentor School Board. They understand what public education was meant to be: a place for learning, discipline, and opportunity, not political indoctrination. It's time to restore focus, accountability, and excellence in our school. Good evening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Fish.
Test, thank you for the opportunity to address you. Well, after being rudely interrupted before I had a chance to try and speak while on agenda items, while, while the agenda item while I was trying to speak about was already addressed, so I do have a couple things to say. October is School Bullying Prevention Month. While I did have plans to share some quotes, which I probably won't have time to speak about, and about Cardinal Cafes, are these like series after, since there's a Cardinal Cafe in November, I'd say, is it the twentieth or so? Is this going to be like a chapter on safety, like one, two, three?
Yeah, we're still working through what the topic's going to be, but school safety will still be part of our conversations.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll end it there, so thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Sednik.
Good evening again. There is a parental rights law in Ohio that was enacted this year, which indicates that children in grades K through two or three should not have access to books and materials that reference sexuality. Yet we still have books like the Jas Jennings book, and Tango Makes Three, the book about the penguin family, A Boy Named Queen, et cetera, on the shelves for K through three children to access. And my question is, why are you not following the law and removing these books? In our second-grade classrooms, we still have the book entitled Heather Has Two Mommys as part of the silent reading program. Parents are not notified of this book and its contents since it's not a library book, but rather part of the curriculum. This is very troubling, and I'm again asking, why will the board not remove this book? Morally depraved people will insist that this is book banning, but this is simply not the case. We do not offer seventh graders Penthouse Magazine as reading material because there would be an uproar. We would be on the news for more bad things again, and people wouldn't allow that. And I don't understand why it's okay to give inappropriate books to small children. It looks to me like we have a school board that thinks they can do whatever they want, and parents and the state law be damned. Besides the obvious disregard for the law, it sets a terrible example to the very population that we're trying to educate. Folks that are on the school board should have integrity, respect for the law, and honesty. And I'm sad to say that under Maggie's direction, we just simply don't have that. I do want to say thank you to Rose for having the moment of silence in recognition of Charlie Kirk. I think that's not politically divisive. I think all we're asking for was a moment of silence, and it's very troublesome that someone can't even be quiet for thirty seconds for that. And so I am sorry that people are so petty, and I thank you for serving us. I know it's not a hard job to, or not an easy job to do, but I do thank you for that recognition. And thank you, Annie, for your service as well. And happy birthday, Charlie Kirk. We miss you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Anna Parrot.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Bill Wade and--
They were just switched.
Yeah, please don't make me the superintendent.
Yeah, okay, and Superintendent Craig Heath. Thank you. I would like to take a moment of silence for the victims, both women, children, innocent men and women in Gaza, Israel, the Palestinians, who literally have been living in a concentration camp where food, water, electricity has been deprived with, from them or to them. And the US government has funded the missiles, which have been, and rockets and bombs that have been bombing Gaza the size of equivalent to the size of New Jersey for the last two Thank you, Maggie Cook, Mrs. Jessling, and Lauren Marchaza. I appreciate your concern regarding the issue with allowing students outside of the district to use the Mentor ice rink.
The ice hockey team?
I worked with a gentleman that used the ice rink, Michael something at Lexus, and he was in his forties or fifties utilizing the facility. So I imagine it's very nice. I've never seen it myself. I love this facility. It looks like it's being taken care of very well. I've never been in this particular building, but I am a Mentor resident despite living in Sheridan Township. I voted for Annie Payne back in 2022, I believe, or 2021, because I liked her position on not masking the students, the children, at the commencement of the next school year preceding the COVID. Oh, boy, can I have a couple more minutes? Just to finish this?
I wish I could, but I have to be fair with everyone else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes public participation.
Thank you. We have, if I could, I'd like to motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discipline of a public employee.
So.
Second.
Second.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Yeah, and I should state that we are anticipating a vote when we come back out of executive session, just if anyone wanted to stick around for that vote, that's what we are anticipating. Thank you.
I'd like to motion to postpone indefinitely the Last Chance Agreement. So moved.
Second.
Janina.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Justin.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion to postpone the C5 indefinitely passes 5-2.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Justin.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
We adjourn at 9:26 to the end.